Public access to tonight's meeting is also available on the city's YouTube channel online and by telephone using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy is absent. Mayor Protem Luke Van Hiramassa here. Councilmember Burns will be absent. Councilmember Hadameo?
Here.
Councilmember Condo?
Here.
Councilmember Roper?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Nowicki?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have three items for discussion tonight. The first one is Adams 12 five-star schools update on state budget impacts. And we have Board of Education President Lori Goldstein and Superintendent Chris Godowski, who will present this item. Please come forward. Welcome. Great to see you both.
Thank you so much. So I'll do a quick intro and just say that we're delighted to be here. I will probably read you or lead you through a slide deck of some important highlights of where we're at academically and points of pride, as well as some of our financial challenges, which I think may have been the prompter for this meeting. As we had some fairly significant reductions, we had to make this last year to our system for next year. I think a lot of people are interested in knowing the why behind that. So we'll share some more about that why here tonight. Lori, anything you want to say on the front end?
No, just thank you for having us. It's always a pleasure to be with you guys in an official capacity. So we'll just go ahead and tell you what's going on.
Do you want to run the clicker?
Okay.
Awesome.
Anyway.
Let's do it. So the first slide just gives you some information about the profile of our district. And you'll see that we've got close to 35,000 students in district-managed and charter schools within our district. It's a little bit tricky in terms of enrollment in Adams 12 because we have some charter schools like New America School, Prospect Ridge Academy, Stargate, and Westgate that are charter schools that are accountable to our Board of Education and charter by our district. And then we have several charter schools that exist on our boundaries that report to a state board of charter schools. And that includes Global Village Academy, The Pinnacle, and Academy. So the 34,466 there are the ones that are either in district-managed schools or in charter schools that we authorize. That makes us the sixth-largest school district in the state, and we've been steady in that sixth-place position for quite a while. Earlier in my tenure, we were fifth, and a lot of that was because we chartered a large online charter school called Kova, the Online Virtual Academy, that had close to 6,000 kids at its peak. They also had about a 20% four-year grad rate and a lot of attrition. And so we separated our relationship with them over a decade ago. About 4,400 staff, roughly 2,400, 2,500 of them are educators. And then we have a substantial number of support staff and then administrative staff of about 300 that round us out, including our principals and APs. Just in that space, I would note, there's often discussion in tough times and even not tough times about how much administration you have in a school system. Our percentage is 6.3% of what we spend is for admin, including our principals and assistant principals. That typically ranks us anywhere from fourth lowest to 10th lowest each year out of the 178 school districts in Colorado. 87.3% grad rate for the class of 24 is something that we have a lot of pride in. When I started in 2009, November of 2009, our four-year grad rate was 61.7%. It was south of 70% in a variety of schools, including Northland High and Thornton High. And so we've made huge strides forward in that space. We've also worked steadily to reduce the gap in graduation between white students and Hispanic students, which are the two largest racial groups in our district. We have a slight majority of about 47% of our students who are Latino, Latinx, in Adams 12 now, and about 44% are white. And so reducing those gaps, that sometimes at the state level have been in the 20% plus range, has been an important priority. And there have been some years past where we've reduced that to as narrow as 3.5% between those two groups. 25 different career pathways offered through Future Forward CTE program programming. That's everything from programs like welding and carpentry and diesel mechanic repair, vet tech programs, law enforcement prep programs, firefighting prep programs, culinary art programs, teacher prep programs. I could go on and on and on, but that's a place that we've invested heavily over the last six to 10 years. We feel like we have lots of students who are more connected to school when they have those opportunities. And not all of our students desire to go on to a four-year college in the way that maybe we felt like we needed to be responsive a couple decades ago. Nearly 100 different languages represented in this district. The largest, as you would expect, is Spanish. 6,256 students with limited English proficiency. Sometimes people wonder what that means. We start out with a home survey each year of our students, and if the primary language spoken in their home is other than English, then they qualify as part of that 6,256. So it's usually in the 15% to 20% range for us. And we've seen a little bit of an increase in that number over the last couple of years as we've had more newcomers to our country and our community. We're still very curious about how some of those enrollment numbers will transpire this fall and beyond. At least this spring on that piece, I'll say that we've had fairly steady outflows and inflows of newcomers. And so we've not seen a dramatic reduction in students in our district as we feared we might. But there's a lot that can change, and that we'll be monitoring closely in that space moving forward. And finally, this slide talks about 47% of our kids qualifying for free and reduced lunch. There's some other stats that you'll see where that number can look a little bit different. Sometimes it depends on when they're measuring it and time. It's been as high as 52% over the last couple of years. And in terms of just ballparking what that looks like, if you're a family of four, your gross annual family income is less than $60,000 a year to qualify for reduced lunch and less than about $46,000 to qualify for free. I'm just mindful about how expensive it is to live everywhere, including Northland, where my mom moved to assisted living two years ago. And the house that I grew up in, in the Leroy Drive neighborhood, now rents for $2,850 a month. And so when you have a family of four grossing $60,000 a year or less, and you're trying to pay rent and all the other expenses, we have a lot of folks who are very significantly challenged on the economic front. Lori, anything you want to add on the first slide?
I also want to point out that we have a really great K-12 program, STEM program, STEM Lab, which is in Northland, and then STEM Launch, which is close to Northland, and then Northland High itself. So we have really developed that program over the years, too. So.
All right, let's take it to the next slide. There we go. Yeah, some points are pride here. I won't belabor grad rate, but we continue to trend up. In almost every year, we had a little bit of pausing in place and some regression immediately after the pandemic, but we feel like we've hit our stride again in terms of some progressive outcomes and more students earning diplomas. And we do that without becoming a diploma factory. That's been part of the message that we've sent to our staff and our leaders ever since I started, is we don't want to increase our grad rate at the expense of having student achievement and preparation for work, college, or military decline. And so you'll see there that we had 71% of our students last year earn a three, four, or five on AP exams. That's the highest in our history. It's the same number that they had in St. Braine, which is Longmont and neighboring communities. It's a much more affluent community and school district in Adams 12. And so we feel like we are outperforming what demographic data would tell us in terms of student achievement on AP scores. And so many of those specific exams, it was just, back in 2010, that number was 42% of our kids who earned a three, four, or five. So going from 42% to 71% is huge growth. And we used to have kids across the district taking AP Biology AP exams, and maybe 15% of those kids would get a three, four, or five. Now it's well beyond 50%. Pathways is part of how we've supported more kids to success in graduation. Pathways is a school that serves kids in a blended environment where they do some computer-based learning to catch up on credits if they become credit deficient during their time in school. They also award a competency-based diploma. So if you're a student who, for a variety of reasons and explanations, isn't going to be able to earn 23 credits because you've had hardships in your life, you can demonstrate competency on some assessments that meet state graduation requirements and earn a diploma that way. And so there's a lot of students being successful through that program. Lori's mentioned our Northland High and STEM Launch programs that are part of our STEM continuing, STEM continuum. And there's just a lot of folks from throughout the country who constantly come to see what we're doing in those schools. I just was looking at an email before I came where there's a contingent from Vermont that'll be here this summer to look more at our problem-based learning approach to STEM, where we want kids to solve problems and present to a panel. Probably many of you have served as panelists in the past, and we appreciate that. And then finally, this last year, we've had a newcomer center at Thornton High School because we've had so many students joining our country from other countries throughout the world. And that transition, especially in high school, when you're learning the culture, you're learning the language, in many cases have had no formal education before, that's been a really tough transition for students. The newcomer center at Thornton High School is designed to help kids acclimate to all of those changes. One of the things that's unique about our newcomer population in Adams 12 is that so many of those students come from Afghanistan. We have more than 500 students enrolled in Adams 12 from Afghanistan. We're the largest place of enrollment for Afghani families in the metro area. Lori, anything there? All right.
This is mine. All right, so once again, thank you so much for supporting our Mill and Bond last fall because that's the last time I was here. Unfortunately, the mill did not pass, but we'll talk more about that. But the bond, we have $830 million, $830 million that we were able to procure in the bonds. We need to renew some of our facilities. We need to rebuild some of our facilities and then just also reimagine. And the biggie here is rebuilding Thornton High. And that's been, that's already been in the works as far as the development of it. I'll talk, that's the next slide. But we always have deferred maintenance, and we can't keep up with it. So when we go out to bond, there's a big chunk of it that we do commit. Every building gets something that they need, whether it's paint, a roof, furniture. Those are the kinds of things that we pay with our bond money because we don't take that kind of money out of our general fund for academics. We also want to expand our CTE offerings because we still turn away a lot of kids that we can't service in these opportunities. So providing more opportunities for them is also one of the things that we'll be looking forward to. All right, so this summer, as I said before, Thornton High is going to be rebuilt. It's going to be rebuilt while school is in session. And if you look at the timeline, you can see it's going to take five years. And we have hired a local architectural firm, Trainer, who is helping us develop the plans for this. They're really kind of fun to see because we're not exactly building the new building in the exact same spot, but it's on the same property. We're going to shift a little bit farther to the southwest, build a chunk, take down a part of the old chunk, and then rebuild the second chunk, and then take down the rest of it when we're done. And it's going to be a great, beautiful new facility. And it's going to be state-of-the-art, and it's going to service our kids, and it's going to actually refresh South Thornton.
And I'll just add to that, there's obviously a lot of things that move quickly. Even the slide from the time that we shared it with the city manager, there's some things that have changed. Like, for example, we now know that we're under contract with Adelson and Peterson to be the contractor for this job. So that would be an add to the second bullet. And in terms of the food warehouse and the central kitchen, which we hope to construct over by Mountain Range High School next to our North Stadium, we believe we're likely to do both of those pieces at the same time and likely open it up in 2027. So there's just constant adjustments going on. And the good news about that is we're going to accelerate our ability to get some freshly-prepared food out into our schools a year sooner than we once thought.
So we have a, I have to use my phone. We have a committee called Long Range Planning Committee that meets once a month, and they're the ones that, you know, they get firsthand the information about how we're moving forward with spending our bond. And the big two that they've been dealing with the last couple of meetings was Thornton High and the new kitchen and food storage. And you can, there is a, you can go to our website, adamst12.org/bond, and you could see how things are progressing.
I'll just add two things that are not on the slides that may be on your mind related to facilities. One is perhaps why rebuild Thornton High School before a Northland High School, as Northland High School's an older facility. I mean, in a perfect world, we wouldn't be rebuilding either one. We like to be utilitarian and practical and have our facilities last as very long as possible. The challenge with Thornton High School is that it has some significant plumbing issues. The toilets weren't flushing last year in the spring for a long time. Had to spend half a million dollars to add some additional booster pumps just to get the toilets to work there. The facade of that building when it was constructed has a lot of vulnerabilities from an engineering standpoint. Before the pandemic, we had some forensic engineers say that if you had a really high-wind event in excess of 80 miles per hour, it'd probably be prudent to close school for that day because of fear that you would have walls that could collapse into the building. We did some short-term shoring up of those conditions, but long-term, that's difficult. And those of you who are familiar with that Thornton High location know that it's on a big hill, and there's lots of drainage from uphill that pours down onto that site. And there's a lot of structural and foundational things that are challenging because of that. So that's why behind Thornton High, it's only 50 years old. So in a perfect world, we would have wanted to extend that facility use for much longer, but it just has a lot of serious challenges to it. I do think Northland High School will likely be a place that, in perhaps a 2030 bond, is something that Board and Administration would recommend a similar tear-down and rebuild project for. Thornton, or Northland was added on incrementally over so many different iterations. I think there are like eight different additions and remodels of that school. There's, I can't remember how many doors are on that building that allow exterior access, which creates some security issues. So Northland's time is coming. It's just probably another eight or so years down the road before that happens. And then the related issue around facilities that I sometimes have received of late, given school closure decisions in other districts, are questions about our school closures, consolidations coming in Adams 12. I don't know that there's any coming even as soon as 26, 27. There's some study that will do very deeply this summer on the staff side, but we're not too far away from having to grapple with some school closures and consolidations. We now have several schools that are less than 300 kids in enrollment. And when you start to see the DPSs, the Auroras, and especially the Jeffco's close schools, it's when they start to have schools that get less than 250 kids in an elementary school. And we're getting to that place with several facilities now. Any questions for us so far? All right. I think we'll talk about budget a little bit. So as I noted on the front end, it was a really difficult budget year for us, and I think there's various districts that hit this pain point at different years and different times. This was an intense year for us. There's been other districts before us and some that will face similar circumstances next year. Our reduction was $27 million that we made for next year's budget out of a general fund budget of about $400 million. So it was a significant, greater-than-5% reduction to next year, and we wound up reducing over 150 positions from our system. A lot of it's because of enrollment reductions. I know that some of you on this council have long ties to Adams 12 and to Northland, as do I. And if you would have asked any of us five to 10 years ago, we would have expected the growth curve just to continue. When I first started in this job, the projected build-out called for us to have about 50,000 kids when all the housing had built out throughout Thornton, Broomfield, other parts of the north end of the community. We don't expect nearly that much enrollment now. A lot of it's because people are having many fewer kids than they were 15 years ago. Ever since the Great Recession in our state, our community, and our nation, families are having many fewer kids than they did a generation ago. So that's a lot of it. And then what we're starting to see on more and more parts of our district, our dynamics that other more established school districts have seen a little bit earlier in time, Jeffco being an example, where we now have a lot of neighborhoods where there's been a lot of aging in place and residents haven't relocated out yet to new housing. And when that does happen, those who are coming in are not having kids or they have fewer kids than predecessors did who lived in those homes when our schools were full or 20 years ago. So that's a difficult part of our budget and funding reality. The state also changed how they fund declining enrollment districts in a way that, between our declining enrollment piece and the change in how they average out those declines over a period of three to five years, that was a total $10 million reduction in our funding with those two pieces. There's parts of our budget for next year that are much higher than the 2.3% inflationary increase in funding that we receive from the state. Utilities in Broomfield, for example, our water rates went up by 50% for this year. Health insurance, even with some reductions in our plan terms, went up by more than 7%. And technology, there's just lots of technology pieces when it comes to software and maintenance agreements where those inflationary annual increases are in the double digits. And then the final piece that we're just trying to emphasize to so many is that the pain is more challenging here than a lot of places because we are the 14th lowest-funded school district out of the 15 in this metro area region, which I think shocks people. And we'll talk a little bit more about the why behind that. Anything there, Lori? So this slide shows the supplemental revenue that lots of school districts receive in the metro area. We often refer to them as Mill Levy override authorizations from voters. We've had a handful of those in Adams 12 during our history. And you can see that those handful of supplemental elections net us about another $2,000 per student per year. We used to be middle of the pack and toward the top of the pack years ago, but we've fallen behind most of the folks there, and it doesn't often work the way that people would expect. Inglewood School District, for example, is a high-poverty district where more than 70% of our kids qualify for free and reduced lunch. Aurora, high-poverty community, Sheridan, Westminster, Adams 14, so many of those districts have greater poverty in terms of the families that live within their communities. But they also have, in many cases, an easier pathway to raising money for their schools because their property values per student are much higher than our communities. Sadly, you'll see on a future slide that we are 15th out of 15 in terms of property values per student. It's all because we were founded as a bedroom community years ago. And so we have lots of homes where people are able to commute into Denver or other places for jobs, but we don't have the same commercial tax basis some other places. And you all know well that commercial gets assessed at roughly 29% and residential at 7%. And so the amount of money that we generate to raise supplemental revenue, it comes at a much greater cost for a homeowner here than it would for a homeowner in Boulder Valley or Inglewood or so many of the others at the top of that curve. And it adds up to real money. That difference between Boulder Valley of $4,676 per kid and the $2,009 per student in Adams 12, when you multiply that difference by the 35,000 kids roughly that we serve, it's about $90 million per year, and it has big implications. One of the implications is that you see school districts like Boulder Valley where 40% plus of their teachers make more than $100,000 a year, in Adams 12, that's 4.5%. So there's just lots of implications from being at the bottom of the supplemental revenue curve. And at some point, I'd love for somebody to sue the state and challenge them on how the school funding system works because our constitution says we're supposed to have a thorough and uniform system of public education. And when you have these kinds of differences, and frankly, when you have a third of the school districts in Colorado that get zero supplemental money, there's wide disparities in terms of salaries that you can pay to staff, vacancies you have in staff, programs that you can offer. We really have a broken state school finance system.
And we can have an educator in Adams 12 take a job in Boulder or even now in Adams 14 and make $20,000 a year more. So we see that impact.
Let's look at the next slide. So as we developed this budget plan in difficult circumstances for next year, these were some of our guiding priorities. One is that we had to do something in compensation, we believed as a leadership team, and our Board of Education was supportive of that. There's a lot of studies that show that on teacher salary, for example, we've been eighth out of 10th in terms of average teacher salary in our peer group, and that's two-years-old data, so we're probably ninth out of 10th at this point. And if you do something like a wage freeze, you just get further behind the curve. And we already have, you know, double-digit vacancies in positions like special education and working in Title I schools and teaching high school math and science. And so we didn't feel like we could afford to go further behind peers in compensation when there's just growing scarcity for a lot of these critical roles. We did apply reductions across our entire system. We made 22 position reductions at the ESC, which was a substantial number. I know some will feel like that still wasn't sufficient, but there's a lot of loss and reductions that came at the ESC in addition to other places in our system. Trying to maintain class size at lower levels remained a priority, and so a lot of our reductions focused on positions like teacher librarians, which we call digital literacy partners, gifted talented advocates that help support responsive individualized education for GT kids. We reduced some of our intervention services at schools. We reduced some elective programs that kids, especially at high school, have in an effort to try to keep class sizes as close to their current levels as we can. That's important, both to parents, students, and the staff to do that. And we also wanted to maintain some reserves for future years because there's a whole lot of uncertainties. Might we see a reduction in funding at the federal level, given some of what's proposed there? It's a continued wonder and worry. Medicaid is a place that feels like it's probably most likely to go backwards in terms of funding at the federal level. We receive $8 million a year on Medicaid funding at present that supports a lot of special education services. And so if that was to reduce in a substantial way, we wanted to have money available for that. We wonder what may happen with our newcomer population and undocumented students in our system, and might we see a reduction in enrollment? So we've tried to have some hedge money, too, in case we start to see some revenue reductions because of those factors. Part of what hasn't received a lot of discussion heretofore, and we hope starts to have a greater focus in the media and by our state lawmakers, are two studies that were completed in the fall and released in the November-December timeframe in 2024. They were commissioned by the legislature the year prior to determine whether we're adequately funding public ed in Colorado or not. And they both concluded that we're grossly inadequate in our funding to the $2.3 billion to $4.1 billion per year. And so for Adams 12, some of those studies, if we implemented what they said would be an adequately funded system, we'd see a 70% increase in our annual funding per year. It's just staggering amounts of money. That they indicate they're seeing in many school districts throughout the country and other states that more robustly invest in public ed. So if we had even a fraction of those resources, we could provide more programming, smaller class sizes, and we'd be in a stronger position to compete for staff, which is one of our big headwinds that we're facing right now. So hopefully, we'll find a path forward to start to invest more to get to a place that we're not lagging the rest of the country so badly.
And one of the things that we've realized at the state level when it comes to the legislative budget is that public schools get funded last. So until the state decides to prioritize funding public education first and also trying to figure out what to do about a very slim pool of money that we just keep rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic with, it's going to be a struggle.
We've also been assessing, where does our community stand in terms of the vote not to pass the Mill Levy override in November? We passed the bond by a 55% to 45% margin. A big draw there was that it came without a tax rate increase. And the reason behind that is property values have increased significantly in recent years. And so if you hold the same Mill Levy rate steady, you can generate much more money when the property values have increased. We've also paid off some debt in recent years. And so because of those two factors, we were able to raise $830 million without a tax rate increase. That wasn't true of our supplemental revenue measure that aimed to bring in about $34 million per year. $34 million per year. And so we've wanted to find out more of the why behind that. What we've seen is people don't indicate their no votes were caused by a lack of trust in the district, a lack of appreciation for the outcomes that we produce. They don't have disparaging things to say about what was proposed for new investment with that plan. The big reason by a lot was a belief that property taxes are too high and we just can't afford to invest and give that additional money right now. We also believe that we're in a place of change right now in terms of people understanding our financial challenge compared to where we were even in the fall. And so when you look at some polling from a year ago, many more people felt like we had sufficient resources to do the job. And there's been some reduction in that as we take people's pulse again in March. So we're seeing some decline in terms of yes, you've got enough and a meaningful jump of 6% in people saying, no, we don't think you have enough money to do the job that we'd expect you to do.
And one thing you always have to keep in mind when you're running a mill or a bond issue on the ballot is that probably 75% of our citizens do not have children in our schools. So the parents, they see what goes on. And so if you don't have children in our schools, you might not necessarily dial into it unless you have friends who have children in our schools.
What we're realizing as we look at possibly going back out this November with the ballot measure is that talking about where we stand compared to the rest of the folks does matter to people in terms of their perceptions of adequacy of funding or not. And so when you share this, this slide that shows that we're 14th out of 15th and we're lagging a lot of folks by significant dollars, that does move people by 14% and saying, yeah, you, you don't have the money that you need. That's likely messaging that we would amplify in the fall, just so more people understand where we stand and why we had the big cuts that we had to make for this coming school year. The next slide I think shows similar kinds of, maybe it's two slides down the way. Oh, it's this one. When you talk about average teacher salary, that moves people a little bit less. And part of what we've seen is that when you show dollars for a lot of folks, the average teacher in Adams 12 made about $77,000 in that 23, 24 school year. When you think about the incomes across our community, $77,000 a year is a really significant wage compared to many folks who live in Northland Thornton and other parts of Adams 12. So that's our theory behind why some of the need analysis goes down a little bit when you talk about average teacher salary versus just comparative dollars per kid and mill levy overrides. But either way, there's, the way that we do work and support kids and provide excellence in their classrooms and outstanding outcomes is through teachers. And this $20,000 a year gap with our next door neighbors in Boulder and significant gaps that we have measured against all of those districts on there, especially the top four in Bold, it just puts us in a tough spot to be competitive. It's something that we have to fix down the road. And if we don't get more money in for salary purposes, then we'll have to create salary by doing things like increasing class sizes and reducing programming, which we really feel like is the wrong direction to head.
And next year, when you look at this data, you'll see that Adams 14 is going to climb above Adams 12. They're able to raise their starting salary 5,000 a year more than ours because they did pass a mill levy override.
This is the slide that I've mentioned a couple of times. It shows that when you look at all the property value within a school district and then you divide it out by the number of people served, we are at the bottom of this equation. And it just has a huge bearing. If you're trying to raise $50 million in Adams 12, it costs a homeowner more in property taxes if you own a $500,000 house than if you're trying to raise $50 million in Boulder Valley and you own a $500,000 house. And that's because the total property values are so different that homeowners get shielded from some of the impact in other communities that they would face in our district. And this is a good example of it here, that if you have, one mill raises $351 in revenue in Boulder Valley, given how much assessed value exists per pupil. And for us, it's about one third of that at $120 per student. So it's, it's harder to raise money here. It is a bigger burden for our taxpayers. We've been advocating very hard at the legislature to change parts of the system, and we've had some small wins. But it is a system that is so badly flawed right now that I don't see the state changing it in a dramatic way for the foreseeable future. And if we're not able to get some more revenue in through mill levy overrides, those gaps that we've been harping on for a while will just get bigger going down the road. This is another example of really the same point that I just was making, that it's just, it's a bigger burden here because we have a smaller property tax base. On a more positive front or a more uplifting front, we're getting ready to do your number 75. And so I'm going to let Lori jump in and highlight some of what's coming your way.
So since I've been around for about 42 of those years as an adult, I was more than happy to be a part of planning some of the things going forward. We do not have money to spend on this, obviously, but there are ways that we can celebrate. We have a committee that is the historical committee and we'll have a digital campaign highlighting on different historical things over the years, like when schools were built. Some of the people that have their names on our schools, especially in Northland, you know, Stewki, Leroy, those were people in Adams 12. And then the high schools, you know, they always have their homecoming and they hopefully will be inviting their alumni back. They, they do that on occasion and there are a lot of alumni in the area. We also have a lot of alumni who have chosen to stay here and work here. My, one of my, my daughter teaches in Adams 12 after she grew up in Adams 12. So it's really nice to see. And it, it's really been kind of fun because there's a lot of microfiche to look at. And I've been working with a woman who has kind of the keeper of the microfiche. And you can go down a lot of rabbit holes, especially if you look at the city of Northland and what it looked like from, from the aerial view back when they built Northland High back in the 60s. The Valley Highway wasn't really there. I mean, it was there, but it wasn't an eight lane highway like it is now. And interesting thing I found out too is if you know, you know, Melody Drive behind Northland High, that was a pretty busy street at one point. It's pretty, pretty wide. Now it's a big bike lane, but it was really, it's been really cool. So we'll have that. We have a logo that will be launching really soon. And then we'll also ask all the schools to just kind of incorporate some of the celebrations. Some of our schools are newer, but we do have a lot of them in Northland that have been around for quite a while. So, yeah. And if you know of anybody who has any information, any pictures, any stories, we have a place where you can share your stories. There's a Google form you can fill out and we'll be highlighting those throughout the year.
Yeah. On that piece, I just love this historical walkthrough time that you all have as you enter into this chamber. And we'd like to, this is a great opportunity for us to gather and collect things, just like building this facility was for you all. So spread the word and whatever artifacts people may have, we'd love to have them and be able to preserve them and celebrate that history long into the future. I think that's it in terms of our presentation. Any questions that you might have for us?
Thank you so much. I'm glad you decided to end on an uplifting note because that was very sombering. Yes, I do see some questions. Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. And thank you both for presenting. Very, very informative. I'm just kind of putting my business hat on and just thinking, you know, we talked about earlier, the number of students going down. And yet we have this crunch in terms of a need for more monies. Has there been conversations about consolidating facilities? And some of the savings that might come from maintenance or upgrades and things of that nature, those monies then could be used to support operations or teacher salaries?
Yeah, we've been having those discussions. And I was in a meeting today where I looked at a lot of data around that. We have a handful of schools that are sub 300 in enrollment right now that we're giving the closest look to, and they include North Star, which is Thornton, Northmore in Northland, Rocky Mountain, which is in Westminster. They're all along that federal corridor on the west side of the district, southwest corridor. Studio School in Northland, its enrollment is in the low 200s right now. And then Trade Drive and Thornton is in the roughly 250 to 275 range. So we've been closely watching those schools for a while. There's a few things that have given us some pause about making any decisions at this point. One is on the southwest part of the district with Rocky Mountain, Northmore, North Star. Those schools have had a significant influx of newcomer enrollment the last couple of years. That's also started to flatten out. And so we just want to make sure that it's flattening and or declining before we go further with some decision making there. The worst thing that you can do is to close a school and then decide or determine that you did so prematurely. And the one thing that I often share with people is when I started in this role 15 years ago, there's huge advocacy from my team to close Stewki. And it's like, oh, this place is small. At that time, small meant you were less than 400 kids and we should close it to move kids to other facilities. And now this last year, we had grade levels at Stewki where we had to turn kids away and say, you've got to go to Studio instead. We don't have enough room for more kids in fourth grade. So sometimes what you think is a trend and a permanent trend proves not to be. Closing a school and then saying, oops, we screwed up is, is a nightmare. So we want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about analyzing things the right way. One of the big considerations that we've got to figure out is what do people want us to do around preschool? Because if you provide preschool within a neighborhood school, typically two classrooms, then what that means in terms of the right school size and potential closure and consolidation and folding two schools together changes if you need to have more preschool space there. Or if people say, I'm okay with driving my kid a couple of miles to go to a preschool outside of my neighborhood, then that factors in, bears upon how much space you have in a school and how consolidation works. So we want to get more input from our community about how strongly do you care about having site based preschool? The upside to it is it's close, it's convenient. And once your kid starts in preschool, they're there through fifth grade. The downside is if you need before care and after care, like what you might get at a private childcare facility where you can drop them off at six in the morning and pick them up at 6:00 PM, we're probably not going to be able to do that. And if you really want full time preschool, that may also be something that right now the state funds us for maybe 20 hours of preschool per week. And if you really want full time to make your job situation work, then we'd have to see if people are going to be able to pay the tuition to pay for that, if we're going to subsidize it. And all of that has implications for space. The other part about school closure consolidation that we're wanting more feedback around is related to boundary changes. We have lots of really, I don't know what the best term is, nonsensical boundaries right now that are a byproduct of those huge growth years that we had. And so Northmore is a good example of some of you have knowledge about that school. A lot of the Northmore boundary right now is proximate to the school. Then you have the Westview boundary north of it. And then you have another Northmore section north of the Westview boundary. So you have miles of distance between a little section of, of our community that goes to a school very far distant removed. There's lots of those examples out there. And we've heard from people for a long time that we don't like our kids going to two or three different middle schools out of this elementary school. We don't like our kids splitting to multiple high schools from our middle schools. And so school closure consolidation, there's opportunities to do some things with boundaries at the same time that you're closing and consolidating. But it starts to move a lot of people's connections to their schools in fairly significant ways. So it's, those are all things that we want to study. The final thing I would say is often the savings that you get in a school closure consolidation scenario is less than people would expect. It's usually about $1.2 million at an elementary school. That's not insignificant money. That's 12 or so teachers that you can pay for if you save a million two. But out of a $400 million operating budget, it's not as significant as people would think. Just to do a 1% comp increase for our staff is a $4.8 million a year expenditure. So a $1.2 million savings and consolidation doesn't raise as much money as I think most people think. It's like, wow, you ought to be able to fix your budget and give people great raises and keep all of your staff. If you just close some schools, it's not going to save us or solve the problem. It's something we have to do at some point. We're probably getting really close now, but I don't know that it's, it certainly won't happen for 25, 26. And it's still under analysis in terms of whether we do some of that for 26, 27.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I'll just say that earlier this year, I had the opportunity to tour Thunder Vista P8, since my esteemed colleague here to my, my left council member Roper is the principal there. And I will tell you that it was quite impressive for me to see the kinds of technologies that are now in this, in the classroom. And so I think I, after that visit, I think I had a finer appreciation or understanding why it's so expensive. Because you do have very high, high level of technology going into the classroom. So, but thank you. Applaud everything that you do to keep our school system running really at a high level and, and high performance measures.
The other thing I would just note, when you talk about some things that are costly, the other thing that's changed fairly dramatically even since the pandemic is the number of students who are identified with special education needs and the intensity of student needs who qualify for an IEP. Historically, for a long time, over my 30 year plus career, that the number of kids throughout almost every school district in Colorado was about 11% of your kids would qualify for special ed. And now it's in excess of 14% going to 15. And so when you go from 11 to 14, that may not sound huge, but when you look at a percentage of 11% going from 11 to 14, that's about a 25% increase in roughly five years. And the kids that we're working with often have much more intensive needs that you need specialty outside facilities to serve. Sometimes those facilities charge six figures plus per year to serve a single child. So there's just cost pressures in a lot of areas of what we do.
Thank you. Councilmember Roper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Thank you both for being here. I've shared with the DIA so many times that it's so important for us to educate ourselves and our citizens, our community members, just so that we're, when we go for the mill levy or we go for the overrides, that they know what it is, the facts are on the table. So thank you. I know it's hard work. I appreciate it. But we are making a difference. We may be ranked very low financially. But what we are producing as far as young people and future forward and future ready people is incredible. I just had an email this week that a student who started, who started with us in eighth grade is going to come back as a student teacher for us next year. So we're making a difference and it's important work. Thank you.
One thing, I came with a points of pride document. I'm not going to run through all of it. I'll probably send it with the city manager and she can share it with you. But just now that we've finished graduation season, we had a, a little bit over 2,000 total graduates in our system who earned over $85 million in scholarships for next year. There's lots of pieces like that that demonstrate very strongly that what we're doing does provide value and that kids are getting well served in Adams 12. We just want to continue to keep it that way. And the resources will be an important part of that moving forward.
And make sure she apply, they apply in Adams 12 when they're done. Councilmember Condo, you have something else?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Two follow up questions. Just from my general knowledge, when I go around and interact with the residents or people, can you just give me a percentage breakdown of graduate students that do go on to college and then that percentage that goes on maybe to a technical school or junior college and then the remaining balance just going directly into the workforce? If you have those numbers handy.
So I think ballpark, we're a little bit sub 50% in terms of the number of students who go to two year and four year institutions. The state aggregates both of those together. There's probably a way to disaggregate those, but that's the number that comes to mind. A lot of the places that our students go probably aren't surprising. Metro, UCD, Front Range Community College are probably the big three. We have substantial numbers who go to CU Boulder, CSU as well. In terms of trade school and those kinds of pathways, it's tougher to get data there. And more of it is gathered by students and exit surveys about what's next for you. Let me reach out to our CTE principals and see if they've got that data for this last year and I can get it onto the city manager.
Great. Thank you. And then one last question, and that is, I know that at the Studio School, for example, last year, they had the summer lunch program. Is that? Is that, is that program continuing this summer or?
It is.
Not just the Studio School, but all other schools?
We have, I believe it's five or seven sites throughout various quadrants of our district that will be open throughout the summer to provide meal services to those in need in the community.
OK. Very good. Thank you. Again, I appreciate everything that you do.
And I just want to remind you, Councilmember Condo, we had talked about going on a tour of our CTE spaces, and we will get that on the books in the fall, and anybody else that wants to join us.
Just thank you so much for your support. This is a council that I feel like I know almost every person up here really, really well because of your presence in your schools and at our events, and we're grateful for that. And anytime that we can provide information, show you around, answer questions, we're happy to do that.
Really appreciate it. I just want to say I've had the chance to do the CTE tour at Washington, and it's amazing to see the level of education that those kids get and then to talk to them afterwards. Some of these kids are, you know, leaving, and I met one kid who was already getting a six-figure job and had bought a truck and a house. And I'm like, that's incredible. What a difference you are making. So I want to echo what Councilmember Roper said, that you really are making a difference. And I volunteer for the PPLs at Northland High School all the time. I love those. And I love just how much all the teachers pour into the students and to making them better and better thinkers too for the future. So everything that was said, I echo. I do have a couple of questions, though, really quick. While Thornton is being rebuilt, do you see any need to, you know, send some students to Northland High School? Is there, what, how is that going to look in terms of how that's?
They're just going to stay there.
They're just going to stay there. Just move around?
Well, no. What'll happen is the first phase will be built, as I said, a little bit southwest of the prop, of where the footprint is now, and business will be as usual. Parking might be a bit of a challenge and traffic, but then once that first section is built, then part of the old section will be closed down, and then the kids will use half-new, half-old. Then the second stage will be built, and then when that's done, the old, the rest of the old part will be torn down. So it's been done before. I think it was Greeley Central or Greeley West did that. There's been a few schools that have actually done this, so we do have ways of finding out how that really works. So it'll work.
Yeah, the same was true of Montbello High School in DPS. They did a gradual tear-down rebuild, more like our Thornton High Project than the Greeley Project, and they didn't see any loss in pupil enrollment or undue compromises to the educational environment. So that's the model that we're trying to follow.
Oh, OK. I seem to remember something during the blueprint that was, it was a question that came up, like, what's going to happen in that transition?
Well, I remember, we did the same thing with STEM Lab.
Well, it can, it's been done before, and it will be done again. And then, now, I remember during the blueprint as well, even though Northland isn't, you know, on the list for a few years for any kind of rebuild, wasn't there supposed to be some upgrades to Northland High School in that bond?
Yes, Northland will receive some investments. We're being very careful about what we put in there because we don't want to put it in at a big cost and tear it back out in 10 years. But there are some things, and off the top of my head, I don't recall the specific investments. It feels like I've got a long list of IOUs to you all now that I'll be sending to the city manager, but there are some modest investments that we're going to make in Northland High because they just can't wait.
I think one of them was the elevator, the sped elevator. And then also, all our high schools are going to get a fieldhouse and so, with bathrooms. So I think Northland's one of the first ones to get theirs. So that's two examples at Northland.
I mean, absolutely. That makes a lot of sense. Don't invest a ton of money if it's just going to be redone in a few years. So Councilmember Goff, do you have a question?
Yes. As we're all, everyone's talking, it just made me, brought to my mind. I worked at McElwain Elementary when it was built, new part of it, the new classrooms and all were built while students were in attendance. And then at spring break, we moved over into the new classrooms, and the old ones were torn down. So, yeah, it can be done. It's messy, but.
Coronado, too.
Yeah. Oh, OK. Yes. Yes. All right. So yes, it's good to know that there are things in the works to improve our experiences for our students despite all the obstacles and the challenges. Thank you.
And I'm really excited about that kitchen, too, because I know, like, our youth commission, they're always trying to work on, you know, healthy initiatives, more healthy food in schools, and the options are so limited without having that central kitchen. So I think that's, that's really important, and I'm really glad, I'm glad that that's part of the bond.
Well, there's going to be a test kitchen in there, too.
A what?
Test kitchen.
Oh, a test kitchen. Very nice. Oh, that's great.
Yeah, I'll just say on that one, sometimes you have to spend money to save money, and that's part of that project is right now, because we don't have a central food storage warehouse, and we're the only district, I believe, in the metro or one of the only ones that doesn't. Our food service vendor has to make 50-plus deliveries weekly, and that comes at a much greater cost. It's double the cost because of all that transportation and logistical labor that they invest compared to just bringing big semis to a central place and then dispersing it from there. So we'll save money in terms of food delivery and storage, and then we can get beyond just the warm-and-serve approach that we largely do now with frozen foods and prepackaged things and be able to cook up some things that are more interesting and that kids are definitely going to enjoy eating.
Well, thank you for this. You know, I just really hope that our residents hear this and the message keeps going out. So if this mill levy override comes back, you know, why it's so important. I know it's tough right now, but we need to hear it, and I think all of us have a better understanding how these state budget also impacts our school district, which is huge, and we've been hearing it from the principals and the educators on our DIA. So thank you. I don't see any more questions.
And thank you. I too appreciate the partnership that we have with each other.
Very much so. Thank you. Have a good evening. Great. Next discussion item is the 2024 Year End Quarter 1, 2025, and Quarter 1, 2025 Economic Development and NURA Report. And we have Director of Economic Development, Allison Moding, who will present this item. Welcome, Director Moding.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Twice a year, I get to come talk to you about economic development, my very favorite topic. And get my slides going here. Basically, our opportunities to just talk about projects and opportunities that have gone on for, we report on the year-end 2024 and then just a little sneak peek of 2025 for the first quarter of this year. I'm finishing two years with the city, and I continue to be really, I think, wowed by the level of engagement that we have with our business community. Our cooperation with other departments as we're welcoming new businesses into the community and trying to get them situated and up and running has been, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. So I'm going to start off, we'll do a kind of some quick demographics. We'll talk about our business retention program. I want to touch on NURA and urban renewal, 2025 update, and then kind of what's, what's ahead. So as far as demographics, you see these numbers a lot. Population, median list price of homes, we track the number of households, average household size. These numbers change all the time. We see different numbers depending on the sources, but certainly, as we compare to other communities, this is one of the, one of the basics that we, we like to promote as we go out and talk to people about our, about the diversity of our community, about the opportunities that we have, and just tell the story of Northland. This is a new map. We, about two years ago, we started to use a new product called Placer AI. It's an AI tool that uses an aggregation of cell phone data, credit card receipts, all kinds of information, and it helps us estimate visitors that come into, to Northland. And we've set out different shopping areas that we, that we look at from, from month to month. I know our Parks Department and our event staff uses it as well, so you may have heard about Placer previously. But this is a new map that kind of our top 10 visited places, as you might not be surprised, Northland Market Place is at the top, 5.2 million visits a year, which I thought was a pretty impressive number. And when I compare that to other shopping centers in the area, very, very favorable comparison. Washington Point comes in next at 1.9 million visitors. Huron Shopping Center, 1.6. Webster Lake Promenade, 1.5. And you can, y'all can read all those numbers. But I think over time, as we continue to keep an eye on these, on these numbers, it'll be interesting to see. A few of them, Walmart Neighborhood Market is one that is obviously a freestanding business. And so we think about just one entity that, that almost million visits a year is, is interesting, as well as we have one apartment complex that pops up on the list. Haven 124 is over on Claude Court. It's a very large apartment complex, which is why I think you see so many visits over there. So we look at commercial real estate. We like to keep track of our vacancy rate number of properties in the three different types of categories. So we track office, industrial, retail. If you looked back, and if I was really helpful, I would have put last year's numbers up here, too. But office vacancy rate is up just slightly over last year, about 1%. Our industrial vacancy rate is also up just slightly. And then the retail rate is actually up a couple percent. So sometimes these numbers will lag a little bit based on reporting most of the data. This comes from CoStar, which is a commercial real estate database. So depending on when information gets reported to them, the information can lag a little bit. But as we look at other communities, this is very much what we're, kind of what we're hearing in the commercial real estate universe, I guess. Commercial permit data, last year's permits were, were down slightly, but 2023 was a really big year. We had a lot of big projects, a lot of big commercial permits that hit that year. So still, I think the trend is, is a positive one. And as we continue to promote redevelopment, you know, we hope to keep those commercial, those commercial numbers moving forward. Tenant finishes on spaces, those add up over time, too. So commercial includes, in this case, does include multifamily, in case you're wondering. But also new commercial construction and the tenant finishes when new, when new tenants move into commercial spaces. So last year, I saw, showed you some really cool graphs that I loved. Those weren't available this year, so these are copies from last year. And the reason for that is that we had some data. The Bureau of Labor Statistics, Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics, for a short period of time, was not reporting data for Colorado because of some, there was a change in the state's, let me make sure, quarterly census of employment and wages. We had a new unemployment reporting system that shifted the data around a little bit. So these were not available this year. They have been able to go back and reconstruct the data, they've revised it, but these pretty pictures aren't available. So I hope to have them the next time I come talk to you. But, because I really appreciate it. I think the workforce overview was one thing that, that I found really interesting. So in case you were wondering, that's why we don't have new numbers. Social media, we saw a lot, a huge increase this year in our Facebook engagement. We've really been trying to connect with our business community. And so we have, I know 108 new followers doesn't sound like a lot, but we, we've been trying to post really on a, on a weekly basis to get those numbers up. We also added a new LinkedIn profile for the Economic Development Department in late 2024, so we're going to start keeping an eye out on those, on that engagement through LinkedIn as well. So let's talk about new businesses. New business snapshot, 2024, we had 44 new businesses compared to 42 in 2023, and then 14 new home-based businesses compared with 12, so very similar numbers to the prior year. 432 new jobs created in 2024 and absorption of 136,513 square feet of commercial space. So new job numbers were down a little bit. I think we, you know, in 2023, I believe that we had a couple of large restaurants. They typically skew our numbers because they have, they do have a lot of workers that, even though they're part-time, combined to be full-time employment. So. And then as far as our new storefront businesses, this particular graph just shows the distribution of those across the various parts of the community. So you see, they're pretty well spread out. We have a marketplace here on Crossing, Washington East. All, lots of our, lots of our commercial areas are represented in that new business activity. Lots of fun ribbon-cutting events in 2024. Technically, the post-ribbon cutting was in 2024. It was like January 3rd. So even though we really celebrated them in 2023, they still made the list again. Cakes by Karen was a, was a big one, as well as a lot of these others that many of you attended, and we certainly appreciate your attendance at those events. Threw in a few pictures here, just because pictures are fun to look at. Look at all those happy faces. And, and that feeds into our business retention work. Business retention and expansion, or our BRE program, is probably what we spend the most time working on, and for good reason. We are, it's the work that we're doing to support our existing businesses. We do that through one-on-one business visits, when staff goes out to talk directly to businesses. That may be because we met someone at an event and we want to go talk to them and learn more about their business. It may be because they have some questions for the city and they want to talk to us about some of our programs. It may be because we just heard about them and they thought they were interesting. Business walks is when we put together teams of staff and other volunteers to go cover a single shopping area and kind of spread out and visit multiple stores typically unannounced. We just pop in and drop off information, ask some questions. We just did one last week at Palmer Plaza at Malle and Washington. So had a great interaction with the businesses over there. And then, of course, we do our business after-hours event, our kind of social networking opportunities. We're trying to encourage collaboration between businesses and get them to build relationships, talk to one another. That has a lot of benefits with, you know, making business connections, talking about what's going on in their specific communities. So we like to say that we're kind of, kind of a chamber of commerce in that regard. We send out quarterly anniversary cards, which are, actually have all of your names on them, too. They're signed by all the city council members, just thanking each of our businesses that are celebrating milestone anniversaries with the city, one year, five year, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50. There are, there are more of those than you might think. We maintain our shop local directory on the city website. We hold our annual business appreciation event, which, of course, is coming up this year on October 28th. Celebrate National Small Business Week each year in May, and then we put out a business survey. And then moving on to urban renewal. Whoops. You all have seen these smiling faces before. Created in 1990, we managed two urban renewal plan areas, sorry, two urban renewal areas with five active plans. We have six council-appointed members, one advisor and one council representative. This picture will change the next time you see it. We haven't had a chance to get a new one. So we do have Les Carrico, you probably recall, has departed the board, and we'll welcome Kim Bauer next month. So we're excited to have her join our team. This is a map of our urban renewal areas. These have not changed since 2015. So we continue to promote our grant programs to businesses that are located in these areas. Most of Northland's businesses are located in a plan area, so we have a lot of opportunities to assist. Probably the two notable exceptions, the industrial park area is not in an, an urban renewal plan area, and Carl's Farm is not. So those are two, two, two areas that we, that we do have to find other ways to help businesses when they come to us. So in 2024, we issued 10 grants to eight different grantees, total of 77,166. It's about $10,000 in the prior year. So I think we pretty consistently, you know, reach out to businesses that are new and offer them opportunities for our business improvement grant, which is an exterior grant program, helps with signage. We do, sometimes we'll do parking lot repairs, we do facades, windows, that sort of. We do facades, windows, that sort of thing. And then our BOAG, which is our utility assistance grant, is reserved for businesses that might need to expand their electrical capacity or need additional water and sewer taps, other types of utility-related improvements. Those grant locations are, again, like our, like our new businesses, spread out throughout the community. So we were from the Marketplace over to Washington East. Other activities, the Marketplace, of course, is a big focus for us. We did in 2024 make our final, we did, not our final, we did our second-to-last incentive payment to Hootenski Capital Partners for the post portion of their project. As their sign, their signage project is just finished up, they're doing some last, I think some final electrical work. But that final payment to close out Neura's grant to HCP is pending. We also, in 2024, completed the, the North Glenn Business Suites, which, with Enterprise North Glenn, which was the redevelopment of 112th and Washington Street. And then we spent a lot of time pursuing a redevelopment opportunity at Washington Center at 120th and Washington. We didn't end up able to proceed with that project, but there is still some hope for that project. So that's all I'll say with that. Moving into the first quarter, we are spending some time working with communications on website updates and expansions. We're adding some new features to the, the website. We've so far had four ribbon cuttings. And we introduced our crime prevention lunch and learns. We've done two of those, one in January and then one in May. Had some great response from the business community, just with our police department to talk to businesses about ways they can help prevent crime in their neighborhoods. There's been, I think, a lot of interest in the camera, you know, the camera grants, which I think is, their businesses can be a great resource for that. And just, yeah, really just talking to one another in these, in these shopping centers. On the Neura side, we've made a number of administrative updates. We've updated our bylaws, added an electronic participation policy in 2025. We've also approved two grants. I think we have a couple more coming up this month. And then, of course, we interviewed and recommended a new board member to you all, who you, you did appoint in April. Looking ahead, we know that we've got some great opportunities at the North Glenn Marketplace. We continue to work closely with them. We've got some, some great opportunities. Soul BBQ is one restaurant that recently did close. There is a contract that's just recently been signed with a, a new restaurant called Bubba's 33. They're part of the Texas Roadhouse family that will be, we're completing the internal review. And so they'll be moving into that space soon. We've developed some new business outreach materials as well. I'll talk a little bit about our visit with City Manager Guyer. We visited Las Vegas for the ICSC Retail Commercial Real Estate Convention. Really a great opportunity, I think, on three fronts. We had great learning opportunities. There were a number of great sessions where we talked, we learned about some of the issues that are facing commercial real estate right now. I know my takeaway was that it was more positive than I was expecting. I think right now, we feel like maybe there's some uncertainty out there, but really a lot of positive optimism. So on that educational piece, we also had the opportunity to talk with tenants that are looking to expand into Colorado and the West. And so we stopped and talked with probably a couple of dozen potential tenants to, even though we're not really marketing specific spaces, we were able to just say, hey, hey, Dairy Queen, we'd love to have a Dairy Queen in, in North Glenn. And then the other piece, I think, was also the, the mark, the networking piece. There were two Colorado-specific networking events associated with the event. We were able to attend and meet a lot of colleagues that work on, obviously municipal economic development, but also commercial real estate, commercial developers. So a good opportunity really to have conversations. And I think everybody was in the mood to talk about real estate and it's a good time for us, I think, to make connections and talk. So the last thing I'll mention on the city side, save the date for our business appreciation event, Tuesday, October 28th. We'll be back at the Parsons Theater. We're working on our theme, so excited to announce that soon. We're also finishing up a, internal conversations about Washington Point redevelopment. You'll all recall that we discussed potential redevelopment of the shopping center with Safeway and the other associated retail. We've got some options to talk about with you, so that'll be coming up in the next month or so. I mentioned Washington Center is back on the market and we are talking with a potential buyer for the Washington Center Shopping Center, which is on the east side of Washington. Very similar concept to what we had previously discussed with a potential buyer. So we'll see where, we'll see where that, those conversations lead. And then the opportunity to perhaps later this fall, issue an RFP for developer to purchase the property at 112th and Irma, the, the technically three parcels. We've also been talking to Excel about the potential to underground. There's some power lines that crisscross the property. So also having some conversations with Excel about potentially undergrounding some of those, some of those utilities. We think that might be something that is, has deterred in the past developers' interest. So we'll see what that looks like as well. So other than that, I think optimism just sort of wraps it up. As, as, as I stand here, I think every day I wonder where my time goes. It just, it just flies by. So many calls from folks. I'll say we've got a couple of vacancies over in the industrial park right now that are getting a lot of attention. So working on some more manufacturing-focused prospects, as well as Section 36, as I think we're looking at what's going to happen up at Section 36. I think that's also an opportunity from an economic development standpoint. So I'll stop talking and turn it over to you, Mayor Protem, and see if there are any questions.
Yes, thank you for the optimism. And we do have quite a few questions, actually. Councilmember Harameo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and thank you for all your hard work and your team. You guys are awesome. The questions I have are regarding the Webster Lake Promenade right here. I had a question about the vacancy at the Los Dos Potrinos. Do you have any suitors that are?
We do. So Los Dos was actually sold. There is a new owner and they have filed, so they are working, they're working on a demolition permit to do some improvements and changes to the building. We believe it's related to an existing Asian restaurant called Peppers. That's the name of the, the company that has, the LLC that has, has filed as the owner of the property. So we don't have a lot of clear details with them. They're, like I said, they're working on the demolition permit right now, but once we get some plans for some specifics, we'll be sure to share those with you.
Great. And there's a, I noticed some of the signage at a Webster Lake Promenade. There's some, like, there's a missing letter, like, right on that corner.
There is. There is an R missing in the North Glenn on the, kind of the monument signage, I guess, on the corner. So we've reached out to the property, Hawkins Development, and they are, they're working on a repair. So I, I don't have a date for you, but I'll, and I do need to follow up with them and maybe put a little pressure on them, so.
Great. And I noticed also that the, there's still a Ramada sign there, even though the Ramada hasn't been there for a while. It's been the Delta Marriott for a while. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay. I will take a look at that.
Other than that, that's, that's great news about, I mean, all the, all the new businesses you're bringing in. I think it's wonderful. And like I said, kudos to you and your team. Thank you.
Pass that along. Thank you. Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Thank you, Director Moen, for this really informative presentation. My question, just so that I can understand this, going back to slide seven or page seven in the packet, is that based off of the cell phone pings? Is that kind of part of that analysis that you use to figure out how many visits?
Yes. If it's the, let me see if I can get, should be a faster way to get back there, right? Probably could have gone the other direction.
Because I'm really kind of curious, is there a way to slice and dice the data to determine if, if you're getting a hit from a cell phone that's coming from somebody that's outside of the Denver metro area or North Glenn?
Yes. So we are able to, we can go very deep into these, this data, where people are coming from, where they went before, where they go after. It's, it is very informative. I, I'm happy to sit down with you anytime and dig through those numbers. I think we could be here all night if I really wanted to.
Because what I, what I find interesting is...
Is this the map you were speaking of?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm wondering if there's a post effect or, you know, the whole thing about having more experiential sort of destination venues, whether that is the wave of the future or not. But again, we could, we could take this conversation offline.
Sure, sure. And I'll tell you, we did separate Post into its own, separate from the marketplace. We can break it out separately. So because we, I think we are interested in understanding if they're really hitting those targets that we talked to them about when we discussed the incentives and really understanding, yeah, how much of a draw they are. I think Kids Empire is another one of those that might have some potential to do that. So as I get better at using Placer, I'm confident we can do that, so.
And then, not sure if this is perhaps maybe a better question for Chief, but I know that the Marketplace has partnered with our police department with their Flock system. I'm just curious if there are any other retail locations in the city that are contemplating, perhaps implementing Flock technologies?
There are none to my knowledge. We do talk to shopping center owners about the Flock as a, as a tool, as a, as a way to discourage crime. I, I'll be honest, I don't know a lot about the cost of, the ongoing cost of, of Flock cameras, but that is certainly something that we talk to them about. And I'll tell you that HCP has been a big cheerleader for the benefits of the Flock system, just in terms of, I think, our ability to respond and know, you know, know what's going on, so.
And then one last question. I don't mean to ambush you, but perhaps this has been in the news lately, and I wonder if you have any opinion or not. But, you know, clearly Broomfield had their first bank center, which they tore down, and then they put it up for bid for developers to come in. And unfortunately, nobody really answered the bell, answered that, that request. So I, I wonder if this might be a harbinger or maybe just kind of an indication, perhaps, of maybe where developers might be in their thinking, given the broader things that are happening in the economy, the fiscal markets, et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, I suspect that in part, it's probably a timing issue. I don't think that that will persist necessarily for long, and I'm sure that they will, they'll put that back out there to, to kind of gauge the level of interest. And I'll, you know, going back to our visit to ICSC, I think that's also a good opportunity to go talk to developers about properties like that and really try to understand what, you know, what are the pros, what are the cons? You know, Civic Center Campus, I think for us is another one where, you know, when we're thinking about how is the rest of the site going to develop?
That's exactly my point. I was just kind of, as I saw this going on in Broomfield, I was thinking, okay, what about, you know, what are the implications for our Civic Center plans?
I'll go back to my optimism comment, so I'm optimistic.
Jack. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nowicki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Thank you, Director Moen, for being here tonight and for your presentation. So I, I know in my ward, there's a couple home businesses and I'll often, a couple times I'll get calls if there's like road closures, things like that. Is there any kind of keeping track of how many businesses are kind of in, home businesses are in the community?
Absolutely. We do have, yeah, we have a system, I think, between our planning issues and in, together with sales tax, obviously, we're, we're registering them as, as businesses. So yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Do they get notified if there's any sort of road closures or anything that might be impacting their business?
Not directly from me. I would say any notifications would just come through social media as we're notifying just neighborhoods in general about things that come up. I don't know if Heather...
Yeah, I would say citywide communication channels. They don't happen, they don't happen often, but we do certainly understand in your ward, there have been some emergency repair situations and the roadway work on Irma.
Yeah, one, one resident in particular seems to get hit hardest, like, three or four times since I've been in this role. Okay, well, that, and maybe I can, you know, tell her to get connected to the different channels and...
And we do, I'll say, you know, on our social media, we try to repost when we see things that are happening in the community that could potentially impact the business community. We do try to repost those as well, so.
And just out of curiosity, what is the vacancy rate at the Marketplace? Do you know offhand?
You know, I have not received a recent update. That last count, I think it was around 87%. We've got some things, again, we've got some things moving right now, so I think...
87% occupied or vacant?
Occupied. So, you know, the primary, now, that doesn't obviously include Joanne, which is technically still occupied. I understand that the shelves are pretty, pretty bare, so they might as well be vacant. But the, the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond space, I think, is primarily the biggest vacancy. And then the, the, kind of the strip between Sinzetti's and Post, well, and Joanne are probably the biggest. We do still have some space over near Phoenix Salons and Famous Footwear. Talking to some potential tenants over there, I think that's kind of their area of focus right now, too. So on that west side, so. But let me, let me check on that number. I try to check in with them to get the, kind of the full report a couple of times a year. So let me see if they have an updated number.
Is it pretty accurate to say that the biggest competitor to kind of all of those places and maybe all businesses is kind of online, Amazon, things like that?
That's a tough question. I think certainly online is a challenge and in terms of retail, I think there are things, I think it depends on shopping habits. It depends on specific products that people are looking for. Okay, now I'm stumped. So that is, that is a tough question.
That wasn't my intention.
You know, I think, I think it's a combination, too, of, of both online, but there's, you know, there is competition all around us. And certainly, I think, as I, as I look at what's going on at The Orchard or at the outlet malls or, you know, other, other shopping centers around, so much of what we, the existing retailers are already pretty well-established. Where we're looking for are those newcomers to the market, new concepts that are coming in. Out at Carl's Farm, we're, you know, close to review. We've talked about small sliders as, as one drive-through that's a new, brand-new concept to the area. So I think those are the ones that I keep my eye out for when I hear that someone's new to the Colorado market, want to get in front of them. I think food will, obviously, food is always going to be a, a good, reliable business model. It, it is kind of the apparel, the shoes, the home goods, the things that people can buy online that are, have been more difficult to keep, so.
And if I may, just add one different way to respond to your, your question, Councilmember Nowicki. I would look at it from the point of it's about diversification, not competition. So when we look at our local business base, you know, home businesses, brick and mortar, online, so, and when Jason, our deputy city manager, presents the monthly financials, when you see the different breakdowns, having a good, healthy diversification and not just having, you know, everything in one basket, so to speak, but a diversified base is important to supporting a strong local... but a diversified base is important to supporting a strong, local, healthy economy.
Sure. Okay, lastly, how many parcels are still available at Carl's Farm?
I believe there are two remaining. I don't know the specific status. I mean, we're reviewing development proposals for a couple of them. I think there are probably about, last time, yeah, two one-acre parcels that are still remaining, so.
Any bites?
Yeah, there's, there's actually, there's activity out there, so, yeah.
Good. Cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Goth?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you Director Moding for this presentation. It's always really informative, and I appreciate the optimism. My question is, I mean, I don't know the process for picking the date for the business appreciation event in October, but it's the same night as a DICE meeting, so I won't be able to attend.
So we do rely on the schedule. It's, at the theater is kind of our primary driver, so what time is the, what time is the DICE meeting?
Six, six to eight.
Six to eight.
No, well, 6:30 to 8:00, excuse me, 6:30 to 8:00.
Maybe they'd like to meet over at the Parsons Theater?
But anyway, I just was going to bring that to your attention. I know if you're working on what's available, then that's the way it is, but.
Yeah, our options are unfortunately somewhat limited, or we have to be flexible with the, with the theater, so I apologize.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm lucky enough to be on both the BRE Committee and NIRA, so I've been fortunate enough to hear a lot of what's going on. And to Councilmember Condo's question about like the experiential, I guess, type businesses, I know that's something that NIRA has talked about as a desire, but again, you know, can't control exactly what's going to fit in the market. Excited to hear more about the businesses you connected with in Vegas. I think that's always positive. And I was astounded to see 5.2 million as the number of people that visit the marketplace. And then I wonder, why did Trader Joe's go to Westminster, you know? It's like, look at that. That's a, that's pretty incredible. I think those numbers are great. But would also like to know if that is the Post effect, as was mentioned before. That would be interesting. But NIRA is talking about having more of like experiences type businesses, so we'll see what happens, right?
Yeah, and you know, I think even at ICSC, we saw a lot of that reflected, and you know, pickleball has been the big thing. We've got the chicken and pickle going in and thwarting up the street, but there are plenty of other operators looking, looking around. Indoor golf simulators, indoor mini, I mean, there's just, I think, a lot of, I think, a lot of indications that maybe people, again, are looking, they don't want to necessarily just go pop in and buy a pair of shoes and go home, that they, maybe they want to go buy a pair of shoes and then go get their hair done, and then go hang out at, maybe hang out at Post and have a few beers. So it's kind of, the term is dwell time, so we're trying to find ways to keep people in shopping centers for longer, dwelling in a, in a place for longer. And that is one of the measures that Placer gives us, is how much time do people actually spend in a given area? So that's all kinds of interesting information that helps us try to figure out the psychology of shoppers.
Yeah, there is absolutely a psychology to it. And then I know we've seen like SEPTED-type improvements being, you know, requested in grants and so forth, so that's something to keep in mind for businesses, as they, you know, can ask our police department to do that in assessment and include things like cameras and the camera rebate for any business owners. I also want to say, if you're thinking of opening a business with the vacancies we have here, looking at the square, the amount per square foot, that is extremely reasonable. As a brick and mortar business owner of five locations, these are really very competitive, really good rates, plus we have a great department that takes care of our business owners as well. So love to get the word out more. And then last question, I know Facebook and LinkedIn, does that also, is it, does it get reposted on Instagram from Facebook?
We have not set up an Instagram. I don't know that, that's something we'll, we'll talk to the communications team about and see if that's something that we should. I feel like I see that more and more as well, and it, Instagram seems to lend itself to videos and, you know.
Right. And reruns of like TikTok videos and whatnot, but I know it'll hit a different generation, so to speak. I get called old every time I talk about Facebook. Everybody's laughing. So I think Instagram is definitely worth, we're looking into, to reach, you know, a different audience. So I don't see any other questions. Really appreciate all the work that you're doing to support our businesses. Oh, wait.
Can I just take us back just really briefly, because I think it's an important point to emphasize. You mentioned Trader Joe's. When Director Moding and I met with Brad Hutinsky from HCP in Las Vegas at the ICSC conference, he clearly understands council's desire to have some type of grocer. Certainly, what's been put out there is Trader Joe's. There's multiple grocers out there, and they've been doing their own research, and so that is not completely off the table. And I think, you know, that type of feedback ties into the conversation you're going to have in a few minutes. So I just want you to know that he's heard Council lot on clear going back to last summer, and they continue to work on good viable prospects.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, nothing's off the table, right? It's what the market will support and all that research that needs to go into it. And looking forward to more discussions, too, on like Washington Point and Washington Center and the property on 112th. I think these are all going to be really great conversations between NIRA and council coming up, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Anybody? Nope. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
Wonderful. Our last topic is marketplace subarea plan, and we have Planning Manager Becky Smith, who will present this item. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. Becky Smith, Planning Manager, and I'm happy to be here tonight to introduce, kick off the subarea plan for the marketplace and surrounding business areas. I'm joined tonight with Blake Young, who is heading the consultant team working on this project. You'll recognize him from the work that he's doing with us on Section 36. So with that, I'll have him join me as I try to get us to the right slides. I think I'm almost there. It's okay. I was just thinking, there's got to be a better way to do this, just like you said. Okay. All right, here's Blake.
Thanks, Becky. Hello, Council, Madam Mayor Protem. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to try to keep up the energy because it's getting a little late, but we will be re-kicking off the marketplace subarea plan. And it is very similar to Section 36 in terms of process, but at the same time, completely different in terms of what we'll be doing, the stakeholder meetings, and the whole process is, is going to be similar, but very different. So for today, we will be going over the project overview, the revised schedule, and the next steps for the subarea plan. And then we'll start to receive some initial guidance from you all, getting those juices flowing on what the vision will be for marketplace. So a little bit of background, the North Glen 20-year comprehensive plan identified marketplace as an area of focus and was the second priority of the city. And for this process, we'll be establishing a vision and framework for future development, and also working with stakeholders in the community to develop and refine the subarea plan, and then provide a clear path for developers to come in and make that vision a reality. And then also, at the same time, the overall goal is to improve connectivity, encourage that sustainable development, and strengthen the economic development, not only within the marketplace area, but within the city of North Glen. So the current zoning map for the marketplace, as you all know, is a majority commercial with some medium-to-high-density residential to the northwest, and then 104th essentially bifurcates the, the plant. So there's a little bit of connectivity issues between the northern section and the southern section. And then the future land use from the comprehensive plan is vast majority mixed-use regional, but then also has a small section for limited multifamily, which was a surprise for me as you're looking at that site. It's, so we'll be going into whether that's a viable option, or if another use would be more appropriate. So the, the project boundary for this effort will be Sections 2, 3, 10, and 11 combined. And so doing this all at once helps us to not only provide that continuity between the northern section and the southern section, but also to start incorporating uses that may, may not make sense for the northern section, but would make sense for the southern section. And so as we start to get into this process, I will ask you all to put on your thinking caps and get those creative juices flowing on what land uses you would like to consider for the marketplace. There's a lot of opportunity here. So everything from residential, I think apartments, townhomes, or lofts, to commercial, your typical restaurants, retail, and grocers, then regional and local mixed-use. So your regional mixed-use is more entertainment, recreation, and just regional commercial, while your local mixed-use is more of that mom-and-pop shop, commercial, and retail. And then also parks and open space. This is going to be a very important component, not only to provide just the functional services for the, for the site, stormwater, facilities, but also to create a sense of place, a sense of well-being for not only the residents, but the visitors. And going back to the conversation on whether or not the online shopping is sort of competing with, with in-person shopping, the one thing that in-person or online shopping cannot provide is place-making. That sense of, that sense of community, that sense of well-being, where you go to a place and you don't want to leave, you end up spending a lot more money. I am at fault a lot of the times, which is what we're, what we're looking for. And then as we start to kick off this process, we are going to shift a little bit in terms of community engagement. We will, instead of doing open houses, we will start to meet the community where they're at. So doing more pop-up events, starting with the neighborhood, the neighborhood nights in July, going through August. So really meeting them where they're at and trying to get some really quick and valuable information. We found that open houses just aren't attended as well as we all would like. Everyone is very busy, and so if we can get, sort of bridge the gap between that, I think that would be really helpful. And then some other forms of community engagement will be an online survey, then study sessions with you all and Planning Commission, and then also some in-person and virtual stakeholder meetings with the landowners and business owners. So a few questions to consider as we start to envision the future for marketplace. We pulled together some, some random word art in trying to figure out what, what we should plug in for the marketplace. So whether it's a town center, a plaza, a pavilion, these are a few, a few words that we want to start to incorporate into the overall vision. For a little bit of homework for you all tonight, I would ask that you look up some case studies. The first one is Crocker Park in Ohio. That's a great town center. Another one is Legacy West in Plano, Texas. These are both really, just really successful town centers that went from greenfield to providing incredible economic value to the area. They are very different in scale, but what I'll ask is if, if you could pull together some elements of whether it's one of those two examples or another place that you'd like to visit, even if it's just the tree wells or the lighting in the area, those are all very helpful, very informative ideas that we can start to incorporate in the overall plan. So the project timeline, this is a revised timeline for, for this re-kick-off of the project. So we are going through the existing conditions analysis right now, and then starting the community engagement in July. That engagement will go through the end of this year and conclude in January of 2026. And then we'll start to get into the land use scenarios. We don't want to jump too quickly into the land use scenarios before we have a chance to really dig in with the community, the stakeholders, to see what they're looking for, what their vision is, because the marketplace does have a lot of opportunity, whether it's an opportunity to provide a different sense of place for the city of North Glen, and also to provide more, more draw for those regional retailers and grocers like Trader Joe's. And then finally, we'll go through plan adoption in October of 2026. So a few next steps. We will be starting the online survey, setting that, sending that out to the community, and then starting to meet with stakeholders, and also coordinate with you all and Planning Commission. And then we'll lead directly into the market study, and then develop the goals and vision for the subarea plan, and then we go into the land use. So any additional questions?
Yeah, so just to be clear, you do want some ideas from us, at least some general thoughts on what it is that we would like to see out of those land uses to consider, so we have some direction?
Yes, I think, to be fair, I'm certainly not looking for anything right now and right this minute. I want you all to take a moment. If you could develop any sort of bullet points that you would like to see, I think that would be really helpful over the next few weeks. And then just keep your eye out as you start to visit other sites, other places, destinations, and then provide any kind of feedback. We're going to be open for the entire duration of this process. If there's, at any point, we don't want to make, we don't want the door to be closed in terms of communication with you all. If something comes up and you say, hey, I really like this, send it our way, and we'll make sure to incorporate that.
Director Swoda?
So what we'll do is, is we're going to send a follow-up, reach out to you guys with a homework assignment and request some feedback from everybody, just to sort of get the ideas going. Tonight, we really just wanted to just identify that we're kicking the project off and getting this thing rolling, and just letting you know that this is something that's coming, and we're really excited about it.
Okay, great. And do some homework. That was Crocker Park and Legacy West, right?
Trying to do a callback to earlier, so.
Okay, great.
Apps 12, homework, okay.
That's awesome. We do have quite a few hands, so let's see. Councilmember Hadameo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and thank you for the presentation. And, yeah, you said get the creative flow going, so I started my homework early, so.
Perfect.
We talked about, briefly about golf was brought up, you know, but obviously, you know, we can't have a full-on, you know, golf course or anything, but I was thinking of an indoor putt-putt golf, you know, like putt-shack. Maybe that could go in where Bed Bath &amp; Beyond used to be, you know? That's something experiential, I think, that people would gravitate to as well. I'm going to keep thinking, but that one came, you know, came to mind since when I go out of town, you know, I'll go to, I'll go to Topgolf, you know, and I'll do that, and, you know, spend a couple hours there, or go to Westminster and go to OneUp, that's an arcade.
Yep.
So it's got like some nostalgia of older video games and stuff, and I, I go there probably once a month with one of my friends, and it's a cool vibe. I mean, I think that people gravitate to it, it'll bring more people- It'll bring more people to the Marketplace, and they'll stick around and spend their money here in North Glen. Well, that's my first idea that came to mind, so I'll keep thinking and get back to you guys.
Yeah, thank you. It's funny you mentioned OneUp because that's the first place I visited when I moved here about 10 years ago. And so that's interesting that you bring that up.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're doing any other places like that. Like, growing up here, we had another arcade called Nicola Play that was on 120th and Colorado. And I'd go there once a week, you know, and it was the same thing, you know, nostalgic old video games, reasonable prices, you know. So maybe that's something that's smaller that could go in and that's stripped by east of Joanne Fabric, you know, since they're a little bit smaller.
Yep.
Another idea, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's been like ice skating rink thrown out, indoor sports places, putt-putt golf. I mean, there's some really great ideas. I'm excited. I think something good will end up going there. I think positive, right? We have more questions. Councilmember Noiki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I think I may have done my homework ahead of time as well in just kind of thinking about this. And I'll just kind of throw it out. You know, I had kind of, this is kind of under like five different subheadings here. So kind of the vision I was looking at, and I think we probably are all in agreement, kind of transforming the marketplace into like a vibrant, kind of walkable town center that kind of reflects our identity and the community. As far as the land use piece, you know, for me, I'm looking at kind of a balance of mixed-use residential, commercial, and public space with a focus on mixed-income housing and flexible, kind of maybe some like event areas for folks. Connectivity, improving pedestrian and bike safety, especially across 104th Avenue. I think that's essential to kind of make it cohesive and accessible to folks. I think that area can seem dangerous. So anything that can do, we can do to kind of improve that area. The, under community engagement, so I think, again, I like the idea of kind of reaching out to different folks. I think it's important to also reach out to renters, youth, especially our Spanish-speaking residents as well because they occupy a significant portion of the city. You know, so that, again, it reflects the diversity of our community. And lastly, under the economic development, you know, development that expands the commercial tax base, draws regional interests, and supports kind of a mix of anchor tenants and local business.
That's perfect.
Thank you. Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I don't really have any thoughts right now. Obviously, we'll do the homework that you're asking. But the one thing I do want to provide input on is the public engagement component. And certainly, you know, since Post is right there in the area that you're studying, may I suggest a pop-up in that venue? In fact, I attended one last Friday, and it attracted quite a young group of folk. I think it was representative of the kind of people that are in the city. And so that may be one way that you're going to get enough interested people to really engage with. So that's my recommendation at this point.
Yep, we were actually just talking about that this morning with staff.
Thank you. Along those lines, to kind of piggyback off of that, all of our other city events, not just like Neighborhood Nights, but we have Pride coming up. We have, you know, the festival lawn events and other things. You know, to Councilmember Kondo's point is reaching a different demographic that attend all these events is probably something that I would add to community engagement.
Okay.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Yeah, I wasn't prepared to really make many comments tonight because it just looked like general information. However, since everyone's putting some things out, I would just challenge you to be really creative, to come up with some kind of residential, like if it's mixed-use residential, that's not rental properties.
Okay.
I mean, we just, personally, I feel like we just have way too much of that, and it doesn't give people opportunities for some more mobility, you know, downsizing or whatever. And so we're kind of, we've had presentations before where we're, as a community, we're really short of that, like, middle housing because like, I'm not moving because I can't afford to move anywhere. And so no one's moving into my house. And so if there's some way to work some of that into this, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. And I think when we get into the constraints of the site, one of them is water and providing enough or finding a balance between the amount of water we have and the amount of units we can provide. And I think with my job, it's, like you said, being as creative as possible. And then my partners at Kimley Horn, they're engineers, so their job is to bring me a little bit more down-to-earth. So we meet in the middle on what's feasible, but still creative. And so we'll strike that balance.
Yeah, it's interesting that the way you put that because I think townhomes maybe would be less like dense than apartment buildings, and so probably using less water.
Yep, and townhomes provide that sense of pride of the area, too. It's still ownership, but you are still getting a little bit more density. And that sense of ownership, that sense of pride. You know, folks are walking their dogs outside at, you know, all times of the day. And that provides a little bit more, you know, frontage or optics when folks visit. They want to visit somewhere that's lively and that's active.
Thank you. Councilmember Hara Mio?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor Protem. I'm aware of a pretty large parcel of land that's, I believe it's owned by Almera Ford. It's on the southwest corner of the, well, it's by Ramos Law Offices, west of there. Is there any plan of, or Almera to do anything with that? Or are they gonna, you know, I think, because I mean, it's a pretty large chunk of, well, parcel of land, and we don't have much more land. So I just see an opportunity there as well.
So that'll be one of our first questions once we start diving into the stakeholder meetings on, you know, what their, what each individual stakeholder's plans are for their individual parcels, and then trying to marry that with the vision of the site. You know, with this effort, the focus is to try to steer the ship, steer the development ship. We may not be able to, you know, U-turn it, but we can certainly steer it towards the direction of council and of the community. And as we get into these conversations, we'll be summarizing all of the meetings that we'll have and then making that available to you all. So that can, I guess, inform your all's decision when we get to deciding what the overall vision is for the site.
Great, and I know that there's probably nothing to be built there. And I know that there's always a percentage of funds that goes towards public art, you know, whether it's maybe like a centerpiece of a sculpture someplace or murals on, let's say even like Post. Maybe it's like themed like Bavaria or something, I don't know. Or you, you know, just something that kind of like gives it more life and, you know, gives opportunity for, you know, catch the eye of the consumer and they, you know, go and check it out because they're, instead of just looking at a brick wall or, oh, you know, whatever. But I just see the opportunity for that, too. Since it's been, the Marketplace has been there for over 25 years. Maybe needs a little, you know, life, breathe into it a little bit more. I know there's been some issues with some tagging on some of the walls, like where the Old Office Depot used to be. Maybe there's an opportunity for that. That's just, that's me being an artist coming out right now or, you know, just see, you see a blank canvas and, you know, you want to, you know, help put a, you know, some life to it. So that's another idea. Thank you.
And I may sound old saying this, going back to the Instagram thing, but making something Instagrammable, if that's a word, so folks can go out and, you know, post about it, and then it starts to draw that activity with very little effort on our end once we establish it.
Yeah, I agree. If you have an iconic work of art or something, people will tag it, post it, put their location where it's at. People become familiar with it and becomes more of a landmark and enjoyed by the community, so.
Exactly.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. When you mentioned water, you piqued my interest. Is it water supply or wastewater treatment or both?
So it's basically on our water resource planning from Public Works. We have about enough water augmentation for about 1,000 more rooftops that have not already been accounted for in Carl's Farm, et cetera. So part of what we're looking at is where does that water augmentation go to within the community and where's the best, most strategic place for it? So that's what we're talking about when we say that.
Okay. Because if I recall, our sewage treatment capacity at some point, we'll reach a threshold where we're now starting to, we're required to contemplate expanding capacity.
That is correct. And Public Works has been working on that, and I believe that they recently were able to update the discharge permit for additional million-plus gallons a day of consumptive demand for that facility. So we're taking all of that into account. And since I'm up here and to that point and to Councilmember Armuino's comments earlier, I think the one thing that we really, the takeaway for the council for this effort as well as for Section 36 is what we're trying to do is to communicate to the stakeholders and the community what council's appetite is for transformative change and how that then relays back to the development community to say, this is what the city council's appetite is. One of the things that we've heard time immemorial as we've progressed post-COVID is that developers want a degree of certainty to know what it is that they're investing in when they come to the city with a project. So this is really kind of that precursor to help them feel more confident in making a decision. And what Blake was talking about a little bit earlier about, hey, let's have a great ambitious idea. Let's make sure it's grounded in reality so that we don't get down a process with a partner and then realize, oh, my gosh, we don't have enough water. Oh, my gosh, there's all these other things that we didn't take into account. So part of the subarea plan is to really look at that at that higher level to ensure those things so that we're talking the right talk when we move forward.
Great. Just wanted to make sure that was going on, and it is.
Got it, yep.
So you have my faith and confidence in that.
Did I focus on that? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. I was thinking the same thing because I know we've had discussions about water and what our capacity will be. I personally, and again, you know, great ideas, think, oh, we want this, we want that, but ultimately, it's going to be what actually will work for the space. But I love the idea of, again, going for that entertainment district type of feel since we don't really have something like that and expanding on that. But to Councilmember Goff's point, too, then townhomes versus apartments, since we have those brand-new apartments, the Alexan as well. And I know this is still, obviously, still a lot of research has to be done in terms of what the market will support. But I do think what I've heard a lot, a lot from residents, too, about like parks and open space, that that's important to them and having those placemaking areas. And I think about, last time I was in DC, and they had these little just pocket areas on the corners where instead of benches, they have swings. And, you know, they're safe swings. But just things like that that are kind of unique and, you know, orchards that has like that playground with a water feature in the middle of it. And the outlets as well has that huge playground for kids. So things like that, I think, are important. And if we can swing that, I think that's a really great feature for our residents that, you know, they could shop and also stop and play with the kids and go get something to eat and go sit out and go visit Post afterwards or whatever might, you know, the case may be. So that's just my two cents.
And going back to the creativeness of this whole process is taking an idea like that and making sure that it's multifaceted. So it's not just open space for folks to swing, but it could be stormwater management as well. So layering in multiple ideas together, I think, will be imperative for the success of this project. And as we get into it and providing a sense of scale as well from the existing fabric of the neighborhood, so we're not, you know, just completely towering over our neighbors, so.
I definitely would anticipate that some folks would have questions about more apartments, for example. But I don't see any other questions. I think everybody had some really great input. I don't know if you need anything from us or if that's pretty much on to the next phase from here.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, we just wanted to, I just wanted to say hello. But yes, just re-kicking off the project. And then at any point, if you have a question, if you have any ideas, feel free to reach out to either myself or the project team.
Okay, and we'll wait for Director Svota's survey.
You got it.
Feedback. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was our last item. Are there any other items for council? No. All right, hearing none, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.